You.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Olson. Their second, second by Commissioner Goswicke. Any further discussion? Here in none, I'll call for the board and all those in favor, six to five percent. Hi.
Hi.
Close motion carried. Item number three, introduction of new employees. Do you have any new employees?
Yeah. Bill, we have.
Kyle. Jake. Second. And. Come on. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Twenty. Thirty. Thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Thirty-four. Thirty-five. Thirty-six. Thirty-seven. Thirty-eight. Thirty-nine. Forty. Forty-one. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Forty-ten. Forty-one. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Forty-ten. Forty-one. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Forty-ten. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Fifty. Fifty-one. Fifty-two. Fifty-three. Fifty-four. Fifty-five. Fifty-six. Fifty-seven. Fifty-eight. Fifty-nine. Sixty. Sixty-one. Sixty-two. Sixty-three. Sixty-four. Sixty-five. Sixty-six. Sixty-seven. Sixty-eight. Sixty-nine. Seventy. Seventy-one. Seventy-two. Seventy-three. Seventy-four. Seventy-five. Seventy-six. Seventy-seven. Seventy-eight. Seventy-nine. Eighty. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Ninety. Ninety-one. Ninety-two. Ninety-three. Ninety-four. Ninety-five. Ninety-six. Ninety-seven. Ninety-eight. Ninety-nine. Ninety-ten. Ninety-one. Ninety-two. Ninety-three. Ninety-four. Ninety-five. Ninety-six. Ninety-seven. Ninety-eight. Ninety-nine. Ninety-ten. Ninety-one. Ninety-two. Ninety-three. Ninety-four. Ninety-five. Ninety-six. Ninety-seven. Ninety-eight. Ninety-nine. Ninety-ten. Ninety-one. Ninety-two. Ninety-three. Ninety-four.
You. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Olson. Their second, second by Commissioner Goswicke. Any further discussion? Here in none, I'll call for the board and all those in favor, six to five percent. Hi.
Hi.
Close motion carried. Item number three, introduction of new employees. Do you have any new employees? The. Uh.
Hey. Bill, we have. Two minutes.
Kyle. Jake. Second. And. Come on. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. One.
Are you from town? From here?
I'm not. Yeah. Who the earth is my wife. So.
Welcome.
Oh, welcome. Are there any others?
I think we just, you know, we have a new state party to solve our people. Pointing at the bar. It's like. Oh, yeah. Um, the decision to be something made that's. Very hard. Um, that's why that it's. It's because. The goal to be a grand God that your. High effective knowledge of the world. That's.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Are there any others?
Hi, I'm Dr. Debbie and I have the chair of the department and the rest of the department. Please, please, they're there and they've been there all three months. So, we're in the role, but I'm happy to be a part of this great picture. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Any others? All right. Seeing none, our hearing none, we will continue on to item. Five fiscal year twenty-three preliminary budget and levy discussion.
Mr. Chair, just as a matter of business, did you have any work meeting future?
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Like for us to consider.
Jumped the gun there. Are there any identifying future work meeting topics?
Like, can I say down when we expect to see the county development fund? Information on that come out? I don't know. It seemed to me like this time here.
Yeah, I think applications are due end of next month. Correct or?
Yes, so Mr. Chair, Commissioner Goswicke, we typically will run that process in October and November. Usually the award is made by you all sometime in November. Uh, we did give a letter to past recipients and I want to say January, February this year, anticipating a reduction in that fund, uh, cause we knew we'd be running into some financial troubles later through the year. Uh, so they've all received that and then, but we will need to speak with you at a point in time here fairly soon in regards to establishing what that amount should be. Put that in our letter, send it out as an invitation for applications and then run through the process in November. Thank you. You bet.
Are there any others? All right, hearing none, we will continue on to item five.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, members of the mission. We, uh, I'm just gonna run through just the primary again, uh, very similar presentation to one I provided last time. A day before you hear. Um, as you know, we're getting very near the end of our process, although officially our process for budget development ends in December with the approval of the final levy and final budget. Um, but for our work until that point in developing the preliminary budget, we're essentially done with that, with that word. Uh, again, the bottom line for the budget this year is, um, we did have many improvements to the budget. We were able to see some increases in revenues by about five hundred thousand fees for service grants and other reimbursables. Uh, we did reduce the budget by over a million dollars or so by taking a line item approach and balancing, um, actual needs against future budget request. We also, um, unfortunately had growth in the budget that, uh, we couldn't avoid largely in the levy. Um, one point eight two million, uh, is related to, as I say, largely the sheriff's office, not to point fingers, but those costs continue to grow. That's why you're dealing with the jail project and we continue to work on that. Um, additionally, the levy impact associated with that one point eight million of additional funding is about six point eight two percent with the caveat that you all still need to figure out the K R L S funding. Uh, and I have, as we did last time, I just wanted to note that the K R L S funding amount is included at the six point eight two at this year's current funding level. Um, the total budget therefore for F Y twenty-three is about ninety-nine point nine million. Um, I showed you this graph before, I won't spend a lot of time on it, other than to say, you know, we do try to track the C P I or inflationary rates against, uh, half levy increases. And, uh, you know, it's just kind of an interesting trend. Good news is we'll be low, lower than inflation of this year, uh, which is not the trend in past years. Uh, the levy and budget summary, uh, is as follows. Essentially, we have about an eight point six total budget in million dollar budget increase over last year. Uh, budget largely because we have some carryover funds spent or unspent in this year that'll be carried over into next year. We are using, uh, continued, um, American resource or rescue plan act dollars to the tune of about two point three or so million dollars. Then we also had some increases in state aid and other federal aid. We hope that to be around eight hundred thousand additional new dollars, uh, but that, those, uh, pieces of legislation got stuck this year at the state legislature. And so, uh, we weren't able to realize that, but we did have some small incremental increases. Uh, so again, as I mentioned, the proposed levy, uh, is only about twenty percent of all new funding. So, uh, that's kind of notable here that only twenty percent of the increase is in the form of property taxes. Not that it's a twenty percent increase in property taxes, but of the eight point six million, about one point eight million of that represents twenty percent of that increase here over here. So, that being said, uh, we have, um, dominant revenue sources as being intergovernmental, part for services, special assistance and whatnot. Again, just to note here that only about a third of our revenue, um, from property tax. And, uh, we have five general major expenditure areas inside the county budget. Human services, highway, street, public safety, general government, and then finally sanitation are the big areas of spending. Uh, then we get to the pitching guy, regional library system. We've seen this information before, the library certified counties and nine cities. Uh, our state minimum requirement for payment into the libraries, so two hundred and sixty-five thousand, uh, as set in two thousand and eleven. Uh, K R L S is requesting this year four hundred and twenty thousand, over four hundred and twenty-one thousand, a three percent increase over F Y twenty-two request. Um, but about fifty-four percent this year over the S M R or state minimum requirement. The budget committee, you know, kind of wrestled with this, made two recommendations. One, to include K R L S funding at the state minimum, and then another to include K R L S funding at F Y twenty-two levels. The F Y twenty-two level is what's inside the budget right now as calculated in the levy. Um, and so you will need to decide that. I have been asked by, um, various commissioners, you know, for a number of different scenarios. And I thought for fairness to everybody, we throw all these different scenarios up on the screen for you as it relates to K R L S and show you the impact to the levy as it relates to the dollar amounts of funding to K R L S. In the upper left-hand side, we see the state minimum. On the upper right-hand side, we see sort of a middle ground between, you know, the high, I shouldn't say high, but the, the request for F Y twenty-three and the state minimum. On the lower left, you see, uh, you know, the F Y twenty-two allocation. And then also, uh, on the lower right, you see the K R L S requests requested and offer F Y twenty-three. So if we need to, we can come back to this and you can refer to that because that definitely, that, that definitively calculates that funding amount and, and converts it into a levy amount, which is important for us to know as we set the levy tonight, hopefully. Uh, and as you know, once you set the levy, we can't bring it back up. We can only bring it back down. Okay, that being said, few staffing modifications inside the budget as well, about three point four two F T Es. Two in health and human services, one with budget neutral because we took again that truancy officer from BAST and moved it over into, uh, the county as an operation, uh, that came with funding, so it's fully funded. Uh, long-term care specialists is financed about fifty percent by the state, so that was only fifty percent funded, uh, amount in the budget. Then we had a new F T E in the sheriff's office by dividing back out communications from, um, emergency management. This allows us to have two separate positions, which is a model that the county had been using for a long time. I don't know, I guess maybe half a decade or more ago. Uh, and then the last couple of hours, uh, in the F T E count are for, uh, per time hour adjustments, uh, in natural, uh, resources and also in sheriff's office. American Rescue Act Plan funding continues to, uh, significantly influence the bottom line for the county. Uh, all of those nine projects equate to about two point three million dollars of requested funds. Uh, the accounting again just to provide that for you. That would leave us with, if fully authorized, would leave us with, uh, two point one three million of unrestricted arcadals to use in future budget. No timeframes require, um, uh, sunsetting requirements. Uh, there's the acknowledgements for all the folks who are involved in the budget, including yourself. We thank you very much, uh, for everyone's contribution. And then, uh, as well, the deadline for approval of levy, that could totally is September thirtieth. Uh, we are hoping to have that approved tonight. Uh, that's what's on the regular session for you. Uh, if you needed additional work sessions on the budget, we could do that, but the levy needs to be set before, uh, September thirtieth. Uh, the tax statements will be mailed out between November tenth and twenty-fifth. The state mandated public hearing is scheduled for December thirteenth. And then finally, we do hope that the board will adopt final budget and property tax levy on December twentieth. If that's all I have for questions, I'll stand for any.
Okay, Tom, so, so what, what you said was, what's in, what's in this book is the proposal from last year from K R L S, correct?
That, that is correct, Mr. Chair. The F Y twenty-two funding level is about four hundred and eight thousand dollars or so. Did what is included in the F Y twenty-three proposed.
So, can you remind me how we came to that conclusion when, uh, the budget committee had a different recommendation?
Well, the budget committee recommended two options. And the reason that the higher option is included in the budget because it needs to be discussed and event, eventually resolved by the board was that we didn't want to publish a number that was lower and then raise it up. The, the new event that the discussion broke out longer than September thirtieth. So you, you do have an option as a board to set it higher and or lower at this point in time. We just need to have it definitively set, uh, to calculate the levy impact before September thirtieth.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have, I guess, a point of order, a question. So we've got, we've got about ten minutes left. Um. Do we want to get into discussion right now on this or do we want to wait? And because what we're gonna, and I think what we're gonna end up doing is, is talking for six minutes and then taking a break and then coming back and, and starting over again. Um, or do we want to reserve it for the discussion for the regular meeting and see if Tom can do his administrator report? I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, um, because I think it's gonna be kind of disjointed. Um, if we have, if we start now and then have to stop in, in a couple of minutes.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, not very long, it's very important.
Uh, how long will you give me? I can probably wrap it up in five minutes.
Right.
All right, let me grab it.
All right, so we will be moving this to item.
It's on, it's on there.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's.
Again, anyway.
Right, I, yeah. Otherwise, we'll have to, we'll probably repeat ourselves. Well, I probably will anyways.
You just.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh. All right. You bear with me just a moment here, I usually.
Oh, yeah, five minutes and you lost one.
Yeah. All right. So, uh, as it relates to the administrator's report, I just wanted to give you a really interesting and, um, I think successful story uh, as it relates to the jail recruitment and retention task force. You might recall that this task force was developed, uh, by the sheriff, myself, uh, H R department, number of other folks. Um, back in around April or so to study jail retention challenges, uh, particularly staffing challenges. And, uh, that work began in April. We worked for about six months. It was a staff and late or a, a management labor, um, uh, committee. And we had several recommendations that we presented to you in about September or so, October time of last year. Uh, the, the board was very supportive at that time of those, and, and recommendations. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, in the eleven months that that program was, from when it was launched to now, we've gone from a thirty-eight percent staffing level to nearly fully staffed at this point in time in the jail. We have one position that we're hiring for. So I just want to thank you because this is a great example of how, when the staff and, and, uh, and management work together along with the board and we come up with innovative solutions, we can stabilize the workforce, improve retention and overall morale. And I'm not saying we're out of the woods yet, right? But we've certainly made a massive improvement over there. I just want to thank everybody involved for that. It's been very, very good. Um, so, yeah, as you know, wages and benefits, time off, those are all things that are important as it relates to improving retention. But we're, we're still not done with this retention based focus on our staff, right? We want to continue our efforts improving retention and morale, uh, in attracting, uh, you know, new staff members to the organization. So I've chartered an employee appreciation committee. Uh, this is a new committee. We've met twice so far, just wanted to update you on this. Uh, what we're doing is we're reviewing the county's fifteen-year-old resolution, uh, which addresses wellness programs and appreciation programs. Uh, the focus is for us to modernize these programs and to make them more relevant and meaningful. Uh, cause the challenges of recruiting and retaining staff today are different than they were fifteen or twenty years ago. Um, so we'll be, we'll be looking at that as a team. There's about seven of us on that team. Uh, then we'll be taking that information to the management team and getting their feedback. And eventually we'll be talking with you about maybe revisions to the resolution, uh, developing some, some, uh, data, dedicated funding for these types of initiatives, which has also been a challenge for us over the years as I'm, as I understand. Uh, but that work is just kind of ongoing. I, I don't have an ETA of when we'll be able to bring that to you, but just want to let you know that that's going on. And I think all of us involved in that are pretty excited because, you know, we are taking the next step on, on being serious about improving the, the morale, the retention and, uh, and the recruiting efforts of the county. Um, next, I just want to update you on the jail project. Um, there is a reference guide that we have developed for the, the board members. Um, it's tabulated and it includes, uh, what we feel are kind of the, the biggest, most pertinent aspects of the project, including the jail study, uh, the committees, the assessment report, um, the elders bonding scenario, initial, uh, analysis, uh, public outreach and other sorts of things. That, that's really just a quick reference guide for you. Uh, we know that you get lots of calls by the public, you get, um, inundated with questions and we wanted to have information readily available to you at your fingertips. So, so that's our effort to do that. Feel free to amend it any way you'd like. I mean, add additional things to it, write on it. Um, if you feel like you are lacking information, please let us know and we'll, we'll get that information to you as well. Um, as a last, um, addition, last minute addition, we included the, the sheriff's presentation in the front pocket there as well. That, that's the show that we have been providing to all the folks we've been meeting with, uh, which kind of outlines at a high level the project and, and the, the challenges and, and those kinds of things. Um, couple other things I wanted to mention, uh, we're continuing to meet with stakeholders and community groups, government organizations, non-government organizations, tribes, so on and so forth. Uh, it's been, it's been quite exhausting over the last few weeks and, and will continue to, to be so. We're continuing to advertise on the website and the newspapers. Uh, the survey and comment portal is live. We're continuing to try to push people to that and encourage their, uh, involvement in that. I'm, I'm happy to, to say that we have, uh, essentially received a hundred and twelve survey responses and thirteen general comments, uh, to date. Uh, keep in mind that we had anticipated that we would accept comments and surveys until September twenty-first. But now that the commission has pushed the date for the decision to November fifteenth, it seems reasonable for us to continue to accept comments, uh, longer than the September twenty-first deadline. If you're open to that as well as open to holding another town hall meeting, cause we've had our two, maybe we add a third sometime in, um, October, and I might suggest October thirteenth, uh, uh, Tuesday between our two meetings in October. Again, not mandatory for you to attend, but just an option for, for folks to get out to that. That would be my recommendation. And, and then finally, maybe hold another public hearing. You know, we have the public hearing on September twenty-second scheduled, maybe holding another public hearing as part of our regular, uh, session on October eighteenth. So not having to schedule a special meeting, but maybe just one more meeting that we integrate with a, with an existing meeting on October eighteenth would be something that we, we might recommend. If you're open to that and I'll pause for just a second, cause our steering committee meets tomorrow, it'll be good to have that feedback to them so, so we can start planning for those things. But I guess if you're open to extending the, uh, the comments and surveys till October thirty-first, uh, adding a town hall meeting on October thirteenth and additionally adding another public hearing on October eighteenth, uh, that, that's a guess, kind of what, what, what I'm thinking might be advisable at this point, since we've got more time to work through the issue.
I think that sounds good.
Okay. But I'll take that to then, uh, it looks like most everybody's nodding. I'll take that back to the steering committee tomorrow. We'll, we'll frame that up. Uh, just a reminder then that Thursday, uh, September twenty-second in this room at five o'clock is the, uh, the first now, uh, public hearing we'll have. Uh. There's no decision, uh, that we're expecting. Um, it is a special meeting, uh, just for you to get an update from justice planners. You'll actually hear their formal recommendation on that evening and they'll be here to answer additional questions. And then you'll also have public input from, uh, from the community. Um, and then we're confirmed that Tuesday, November fifteenth will be the meeting that will schedule the, uh, the decision for the, uh, the jail project. Couple other, just two other important dates. The behavioral health crisis center, I'm really pleased to announce, is going to hold its ribbon cutting and grand opening on Thursday, September twenty-ninth at one o'clock. Goes from one to three, uh, really a special facility, uh, first of its kind, really in our area. Um, and all sorts of, of, a really great, um, opportunity here for serving our community. And as you all know, the county was a very strong supporter in that project. Um, and then just another reminder that the October fourth work and regular session meetings will be held at Eccles Community Center. That is our last of the remote meetings for the year. Uh, so you just want to make sure you note that on your calendar that we'll be meeting over at the, the Eccles Community Center. That's all I have for you. I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Okay, Tom. Any questions? All right. If none, we're adjourned for two minutes.
We make it five.
You need five? You, you used three of them and, and coming from the last meeting.
Taking a five-minute break then.
All right, we'll be back at five after five.
Thank you.
All the regular meetings are ordered for staff of applicable regions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General comments by the board chair. I have none tonight. Uh, I guess I just want to remind folks that it is, uh, National Voter Registration Day, so make sure you get out there and register. Uh, citizens addressing the board, anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Personnel complaints may be submitted to the board in writing through the county administrator's office. A person addressing the board may not use profanity or vulgar language. So if there's somebody that would like to come forward, uh, but if you're not on the agenda.
My name is Matthew Black. I live at fifty seven thirty seven Stridner Road Northwest. That's, I live at my mother's house. My property just south of that, which is fifty six thirty three Stridner Road. This south of that is fifty four seventy five, which brings me here. I would like to know how, well, first of all, I saw what severe PTSD as a result of military. Um, I've had a very rough year due to an injury I sustained earlier this year. But I always had my property as a safe haven, my church, you know. Sorry, but it's my version of my church. That's where I find peace and solace and everything that literally keeps me going every day because the rest of my world is pretty much gone. Well, let's say approximately two weeks ago, all of a sudden jet engines are running down, running full time, nonstop at that address at fifty four seventy five Stridner Road Northwest, which is less than a hundred yards away from my yard. And what those machines are, there's only two of which will be ten running and they're louder than, they're loud, 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 loud. They're Bitcoin mining machines. How did this happen? How did this happen? How did they end up right next door to my house without ever knowing about it? They are so loud and not only the loud issue, that's what gets me. I no longer have peace or solitude at my property. None, zero. My mind is gone because that was my place. Now it's tainted. It'll never, ever be the same. That's where I used to go and visit with my dad, talk with my dad who passed away about fourteen years ago. Cause when he passed, I spent about two weeks sitting on a stump there. That got me through that time. That is gone. That peace and solitude is gone now because of this. I met with, uh, the operator or the owner of these machines, a guy named Aaron Hall from Grand Forks, and he worked, the company that owns those machines is Sun Dog Bit Mining Company. So I met with him and, uh, a gentleman from, uh, Beltrami Electric, one of the head guys there. I forget his name offhand. I apologize for that. And, uh, this and that, you know, a bunch of talk and they're blowing it my way. First of all, I was blindsided by having that Beltrami Electric guy at this meeting. I thought it was just going to be myself and Mr. Hall. So I was kind of confused, you know, or kind of flustered or, you know, I couldn't think straight with this other individual there. But what it comes down to, I would like to know how this Bitcoin mining machine ended up there. If you, it took me about not even twenty minutes on Google, and I'm not a computer guy, to find how detrimental these are to the community. How much energy, how much electricity they use, one, one quote that it said, now granted, this is Google and I don't trust anybody, let alone Google. I don't trust my own mother anymore because of this past. I've had the worst year of my life. I don't trust myself anymore. These things, one, one statement said, or one article said that these things in ten minutes to mine one Bitcoin use the same amount of power as it would an average household to run fifty days. That's a huge demand off of our grid. And these guys, the Beltrami Electric guy, Mr. Hall told me, they said, oh, it'll be better. It'll make your electricity cheaper and so. You know, it's not even about the cost. It's about this exorbitant amount of energy that you're using and it is no, it benefits the community none whatsoever, yet they're using our, our electricity. It's going to bet and benefit Beltrami County, I imagine, in tax somehow revenue, definitely Beltrami Electric, definitely Sun Dog. It's just this small group of individuals who will ever have access to Bitcoin. You know, so why do we have this in our, in our neighborhood? It doesn't benefit the community one bit whatsoever. And if you look online, it'll show you article after article of communities that have had severe problems with the Bitcoin mining machines. Is it like anything else? Once they're in, you can't stop it. Well, they're in, fellas, and they got there somehow without us being notified. I spoke to a gentleman on the, somebody up here and, uh, he was surprised about it. He had heard nothing about. It, I would, I want answers. I'm, I'm beyond, you took my peace of mind. And you know what? I say you, because somebody up here knew about it. Somebody up here had to have known about it. They said they went through protocol. If they did go through protocol, there's got to be a different president set. Otherwise this neck of our world, the north of, you know, North America, northern Minnesota, the woods, the quiet. It's gone. If you want me to play a little, a little video or a little sound video here. This is of the noise part and I've got plenty of me sitting in solitude, just pondering life. That's the only place I get my peace and quiet is on my property. Here's what it sounds like now, twenty-four seven. That's two of them running. They're over there working like the dickens day and night to get all ten of them up and running. That's just two of them. Less than a hundred yards from my house, twenty-four seven. And another thing while around that issue, a smaller matter, but a large matter, because I am all about Mother Earth. I'm Native American descent and as I said, I'm a veteran. There's no porta jocks there. They've been working there for a couple of months. There's no porta jocks. And I came about realizing that when I walked across the property to measure from the corner where this is happening to where my house will be getting built. The only reason that's not built is because the price of lumber went so high during COVID. There are piles of toilet paper out in the woods and I, Dawn, I mean, hey, what the heck? I've worked on the pipeline. I've worked, you know, here and there. I've done a potato harvest on our Ardio. We always had a porta jock. There's no porta jocks down there. That's the simplest thing complaint I have. They're pooping in my woods. Now, when I walk out in the woods, I have to look out for human feces. This is, there's something not right about this, something, some, something was not followed. Either something, if, if everything was fouled, something's got to be changed. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to approach the board? On an item not on the agenda? Seeing none here and none, I will call for the approval of the agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
We got a motion by Commissioner Gosbig, your second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Olson to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Bearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda.
So I move.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion? Bearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Onto the regular agenda, item eight, approval adoption of FY twenty-three preliminary budget and levy.
Well, um, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm not sure where we, how we want to go about this. The, um, Tom gave us a number of, um, of, of options with different figures. Um, uh, I just would like to say a couple of things specific to the, um, to the library, um, to Kichigami Live, uh, Regional Library Systems requests, um. I'll try and only bring up new information, not anything that we've talked about in the past. One thing that I want to show is I was given a, um, a petition, uh, from the good people in Black Duck. There's a hundred and thirty-six signatures here from people from Hines, Ten Strike and, uh, and, um, and Black Duck. It's by no means official. There's not, there's not uh, always addresses or there's no addresses. It's just the cities that people are from. And I'm pretty sure that one or two of the, of the people are young children. So I mean, this probably wouldn't work in a, in a, in, as far as getting something, as far as like a referendum on a ballot or something like that. But it does show that a lot of people up in Black Duck are very concerned about their library being, uh, adequately funded. Um, and so I don't know, I'll, I, if you guys want to look at it, I can pass it around. I mean, it's, it's a bunch of names, you know? But I think it's anecdotal information of, of, uh, the good people in Black Duck, in Hines, in Ten Strike, and how much they treasure their library. Um, the other thing that I want to say is, and I've, I have tried to explain this in the past. I, I feel that I'm pretty sure that everything I'm going to say tonight is completely, will go, will fall on deaf ears and you will do what you do regardless of what I'm going to say. But for the record, I think it's important for me to say this. Um, so we realized, uh, uh, with, uh, we had a long-term executive director. On her exit, we realized that, that money had been scrolled away into accounts that we didn't know about as a board. And that does fall on the board. I mean, at the end of the day, we're the ones in charge, just as, as the county board is the, is where the buck stops. Um, we spent about eighteen months. And keep in mind, there are five counties, nine cities that make up the Kichigami Regional Library System. We all have one person on the board. I am our representative. We worked for eighteen months, literally yelling at each other. Yeah, I don't know if, who, um, if people know my relationship with Nancy Erickson. I love her dearly, but we bicker about everything and agree on almost nothing. Finally, we found an agreement that worked for all of the LGUs that were at the table. It was very, very difficult. It took hours and hours on many, many nights, lots of late night driving home from Pinewood, uh, from Pine River, rather. Um, finally, we hammer out this agreement where we are going to take some of the funds and put it into a capital improvement fund so that when cities have capital improvement costs, they can draw from that fund. Um, this will, this will lower the levies of the cities, of the participating cities for, for years. Um, probably five to ten years, uh, depending on the, on the amount that each city, uh, each branch library has. We then took another pot of money and said that, or another amount and said that we would use that to buy down the cost of, um, uh, the, of the, of the, um, dollars given by counties. Um, this year, Beltrami County received forty-two thousand five hundred dollars and they asked for a three percent increase. They too have, are dealing with inflation as we are. They too are negotiating with, um, with, uh, 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 labor, a labor union to try to get out a new contract. They asked for a three percent. We are looking at a six point four to a six point eight, seven percent increase. We are now on top of that telling the library that they are not living within their means and that the three percent increase is egregious and that we don't want to pay it. We're holding them to a higher standard than we're holding ourselves. Um, it's been mentioned that we could use our reserves to buy down the cost, by our, I mean, KRLS, the Kichigami Regional Library System. We in fact are doing that. We're doing that with all of the LGUs. Um, for me to go back, well, I can't go back to our next meeting because it's Thursday and we're having our, our hearing here for the jail, so I'm not going to be there. For me to go back and ask them to unwind the clock and go back to new negotiations is, it's impossible and I, I won't do it, uh, because we worked so hard. If we try to renegotiate how we're going to buy down those reserves, it's going to throw anything, everything into flux again and we're going to go back to bitter fighting and, um, and it's very, it's just, it's not going to happen. Um, we could also, we have, you know, we have three or four months of reserves. It's around eight or nine million dollars as a county. We could easily use that to buy down our, our, um, our, uh, levy increase if we wanted to. We have two point one, three million dollars in ARPA funds. We could use that to buy down our, our one point seven, one point eight million dollars in, in levy increases if we really wanted to. But we're not going to because it wouldn't be prudent, but we're telling the Kichigami Regional Library System, for us, for one LGU, one local government unit of the fourteen that are involved, you guys should change your system that you worked so hard to put together because we have a political need personally to lower our, our levy. Um, I think that that's unfair. I think it's kind of bullying. It's also armchair quarterbacking. And you guys entrusted me for six years now to be our representative on the KLS board. And here at the eleventh hour, you're saying, no, it's not good enough. You need to go back and renegotiate. That's not how it works. It's not how it's going to work. It's impossible. You know, it took us forever to get to where we are. It's, it's responsible what we're doing at KLS. It's going to make sure that in future years, when I'm no longer on this board, that this board will have an easier time passing, uh, um, uh, responsible levies, um, because KLS will continue to buy down our cost of participation until those funds run out, which they will do sometime. So using it all in one budget year or a large amount of it in one budget year to help one local government unit be able to say that we're going to have a, a six point two or a six point three nine instead of a six point eight, seven, um, budget, you know, levy, it, it's, so what we're doing, if we are going to cut the, the levy or cut the budget to KLS, it's going to save us about fifty cents per hundred dollars that we pay in property taxes, fifty cents, you know? And it's probably going to mean, well, it will surely mean a, a loss of staff. It'll mean a loss of operational hours because all of the money that we pay to the KLS system goes to our two branch libraries to fund operations, to fund, you know, basically utilities and labor. There's nothing else for us to cut. We can cut the circulation a little bit. We can reduce the hours of, of the days of delivery service down by a day or two, but we need to be able to receive books. We need to be able to send out books for the internet, in our library alone. So there's really not much else we can do other than cut staff and cut hours of operation. We have done that in the past. The library used to be open six days a week from nine to seven. Now it's open five days a week, four days a week from nine to seven, two days a week from, uh, uh, nine to five. Um, so we'll reduce it back, you know, we'll reduce it back. We won't have the evening hours and then we won't be able to have, um, uh, use our legacy dollars to bring in, um, um, speakers in the evening. Um, we'll have to bring them in during the day when it's going to be harder for people to make it because they have to work. Um, potentially we're going to have to cut hours at, um, at Black Duck, uh, Black Duck right now is open for twenty-one hours a week. Uh, we get money, uh, it's RLTA money, um, uh, that funds specific, um, uh, technology part portions or costs of, of operating our library system. We get that RLTA money, uh, our, uh, uh, branches that are open less than twenty hours a week don't qualify for those dollars. So by cutting it and forcing us to cut the library, we may, it may jeopardize our ability to receive those RLTA dollars. So it'll further weaken our branch libraries. Um, this is, this is a contrived crisis. This is all because the state sent us a letter that said the minimum that we have to pay is two hundred and some thousand dollars. In the same way that if we wanted to, we could cut Ernie's budget in half. There's no statute that says that we have to fully fund the sheriff's department. There's no statute that says we have to fully fund the highway department. We could cut them at any time. But we're not going to because it's not responsible. But for whatever reason, we are picking on the library, the, the, the library of all things. In, in a couple of months, we're going to pass, uh, a resolution to take out tens of millions of dollars in bonds to build a jail. Uh, as a, as a person that spoke to us a couple of weeks ago, we have a state of the art liquor store in this community. We're going to have a state of the art jail and we're going to defund our library. This is, this is, it's, it's so absurd. I don't even know how to put together an argument that will resonate with you, but I don't think it's going to. I think that you're going to vote for the cuts. And it, it boggles the mind as to why we are deciding to pick on the Kichigami Regional Library, the, the Minnesota, the, the Beltrami or the Bemidji Branch, the Black Duck Branch, that have worked so hard over the years to, to take care of our citizens. I remember one time when it was twenty below, uh, thirty below and Kichigami shut down all the libraries. Our staff came in, our Bemidji staff came in to the Bemidji Branch Library. They worked for free that day to keep the doors open because they knew that there are people that, that, um, that relied on them for heat during the day. And so they came in and opened the doors. I mean, that's the dedication that our staff has at that branch. Um, and I'm sure there are similar stories of the dedication in Black Duck. Um, and so our treatment to them, our thanks to them is saying, thank you for your service. We're going to cut your budget by thirty-five percent. Or even if you go somewhere in the middle, say, oh, we're only going to cut it by seventeen percent. So we only have to then fire one person or one and a half people. We only have to close, you know, twelve additional hours. Um, this is, this is so utterly irresponsible and, and frankly unnecessary. One hundred and sixty thousand dollars up against a hundred million dollar budget. And we're saying, oh, we have to tighten our belt and we're going to do it on the back of the library for a half a percent, four tenths of a percent savings on the levy increase. It just does not pass the cost benefit analysis. Um, the amount of good that the library, these libraries do as far as childcare for a place for kids to go after school, um, as far as helping people find jobs, um, helping people learn how to use the internet, how to get an email account set up. The, the amount of, of work that they do is, is so grand that I think if we all appreciated the work that they did, this wouldn't even be a discussion. But we get one letter from the state telling us that we don't have to pay more than two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And so that's what we're looking at doing. Um, and I could go on and on and on. I really want to, but I think I've talked long enough. I think you know where I stand. Um, and with that, I am going to make a motion that we approve, um, the, the levy request at the twenty million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and thirteen dollar level. That is a six point eight, seven um, percent increase or a one point eight, six million dollar increase. And that includes the full three percent requested funds that the KLS, um, requested initially. And I, I beg someone to second it. I imagine it will get voted down, but maybe if we get seconded, then at least I can fulfill my promise to my constituents with that I would not support anything less than full funding of our libraries as we all should. So that is my motion and I thank you, um, and I look forward to your, um, uh, comments on my, uh, on my heartfelt speech here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion by, excuse me, we have a motion by Commissioner Olson as our second.
I'm going to second it for a discussion.
We have a second by Commissioner Anderson.
So just because you can't meet the next meeting, what about the meeting after? How often do you meet the K R L S board?
We'll meet again. We don't have a meeting in October. We will be meeting again in November.
Okay, so so you could meet in November and approve any difference between our funding and the funding requested in your November meeting? And then we could bring that
I mean,
at that point.
Well, yeah, I I can I can bring that request to the to the K R L S board, but I I I will also vote against it.
Why would you vote against harming the the local library?
So you're, yeah.
If you've got the money and you could vote for fulfilling that, that so that you don't have a problem with the local library, why would you intentionally harm them just to prove your point?
Right, because I I don't appreciate. So I already tried to explain to you, I think for the second time, that we worked for almost two years to try to figure out how we were going to deal with the with the surplus. And we hammered out an agreement, fourteen LGUs hammered out an agreement. It was very, very difficult. And now you're asking me to ask my thirteen colleagues to ignore that and give a special favor because you don't want to see a half cent, a half percent higher levy request there increased than than, you know, and that's
Half percent, I'm saying whatever it might be, less than the requested amount. If it's if it's
Right.
The amount that's in the budget right now is only twelve thousand two hundred and two dollars. Why wouldn't, why would that be such a heavy lift for them to to approve that? They shouldn't have come with a
Should not have come with a increase in the first place. When you have that much of reserve, you shouldn't be asking for an increase. They should have taken that additional twelve thousand two hundred and two dollars, tacked it on to the forty two thousand five hundred that they're already doing, and maybe not have a ten year payback, but or spend down of that money, but have a nine and a half year spend down of that money or whatever it works out to be. It just, to me, it was irresponsible to to ask for an increase at all when you have that many, that much of a reserve fund.
I so I I think that the problem here is that you don't understand or you're unwilling to understand or appreciate the fact that the that the dollars that we have in reserves belong to all thirteen LGUs. You know, and and if if I said ten years, that's an approximation. That's not, that's not exact, you know? But it is, it is several years. Why, why should this year? Why, why do you demand that you get to use these funds this year? They took, they took years to accumulate and and you are saying that that you want us to make a special allowance for one L G U because you don't want to have to see a a a increase.
Crow Wing does not pay more than the state minimum. We're we've been paying way over the state minimum. We contributed therefore a lot to of this.
And they pay a hundred thousand dollars more than us. And I have explained that to you about the arbitrary nature of that state statute that sets the minimum. I have explained that so many times and and and, you know, so I'll explain it again. In in two thousand eleven, the state passed us a a a state statute that said, whatever you paid in two thousand nine, ninety percent of that is the minimum that you have to pay every year. And for whatever reason, Crow Wing County paid, what, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that year? And we paid two hundred and seventy or something like that. What happened in those years to make Crow Wing County's payment that high? I don't know if there's a special cost. There must have been something special about that year. And then they got stuck with that minimum maintenance of effort.
But Crow Wing County is not the second poorest county in the state either. And, you know, they they have a lot more taxable property. We're only twenty five percent taxable property. They have a lot more ability to pay. We're paying, you know, four hundred and eight thousand the current year, and that's what we have in the current budget, which is only a hundred thousand less than them.
Right, and they fund one library, we fund two. We fund our libraries. None of our dollars go to the the Brainerd Branch. None of our dollars go to the Park, the the Park Rapids Branch. They go to our branch. The the reason we pay the level that we do is because we have valued our libraries over the years. That's why we pay that amount, because that's what it costs.
Because they've over requested over the years. They've over requested money over the years. That's how that reserve fund got built up to be so huge that you didn't even know, the lack of oversight. You didn't know that it had that gotten that huge. You admitted it yourself. And and now we're just saying you should be spending it back a little bit faster than what you're planning on spending it back. So, yeah, it's armchair quarterbacking, whatever you want to call it, but the reality is most reasonable people would say that it was silly to ask for any increase on this year's budget when you have that kind of reserve fund.
Those dollars, those dollars are a result of over budgeting labor by budgeting hundred percent labor. And that happened for several years. And yes, that is a mistake and we corrected it. What what we cannot do is go back to the drawing board. We have a great, the, there is, as far as I know, there is one person, maybe two, of all of the LGUs, of all of the council members, all of the county commissioners that are that are today saying, no, you need to renegotiate so that we get more money this year. And that's not fair. I'm not going to go back to them, you know, and and try and and do a new a new deal. It was way too difficult to get done and we got it done. We had people, very conservative people, very liberal people, or whatever you want to say, people from all different walks of life, all different philosophies. We came down with this solution. And we voted on it. It was a unanimous vote. I'm not, we are not going to go back and redo it again. It'll take two years. We're definitely not going to do it in time to affect this, the twenty twenty three budget. You know, if if you want, maybe we can try again, or or whoever my replacement is in the new year can try and 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 fix that. But it's not going to get done before before January first, you know, it just can't.
And and
Oh, thank you.
And Reed is correct. It will not happen that quick. It it just won't because of the nature of of so many different, it's a joint powers group. And every group just has one vote. And so it that that won't happen. But I do hope that, it's my hope, that the new person is going to replace Commissioner Olson. Or one of us will take this on as a mission through next year and then be up here at the budget time with the budget committee and talk through what the decision was at Kichigami. Because I think the communication was missing at budget time. But I think with the information that I'm hearing, I certainly feel that we can we can afford to go ahead and do this for this year. And then if we have to overhaul it, but we have one vote as they meet in in Pine River, so.
And and I'll just reiterate, and then I'll try, I will try really hard to shut up, that that Kitchy is contributing forty two thousand five hundred dollars towards this. So had they not been, had they not spent their the reserves, it it would have been a larger request. So we are, we are saving. This is, there is a savings here.
So Commissioner Olson, I I guess I was jotting down some notes and questions here and and I'm trying to get a a better understanding and maybe some clarification. You 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 talk about you're not going to go back to Kitchy and ask for a special favor, you know, but to me, you you're coming to the county board asking for a special favor when we have departments out there that that trim their budgets and that they're looking, you know, to to help us out here. So how do you expect me to go back to our to our departments and ask, you know, and 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 tell them, you know, sorry, you know, they they didn't have that option to organize. So to me, that's that's a, that, to me, that's a special favor. You know, also, you speak of speakers will have to come during the day and not evening. Why? I mean, I'm I'm sure speakers have their the flexibility and and the the ability to to make their schedules. So I'm I'm asking, you know, I'm I'm wondering where where is the proof in all this? You know, I think I think Kitchy really missed the missed the the opportunity to inform us on on how this really affects their their ability to operate. So, you know, you you mentioned Marion, you know, over budget on on labor. But all the calls and emails and and conversations I've I've had and heard were that that the reserve can't be used on personnel. So how how is that even possible? You know, you know, I feel like, you know, offended in a sense that you you're talking about the hard work that that the Kitchy Board, you know, did to to submit this proposal. You know, what about the our staff? What about our our auditor treasurer? What about, you know, the county commissioners, our department heads? We didn't work hard?
So, yeah, and that is clearly, Mr. Chair, you know that that's not what I was insinuating. It is not, it's not them and not you. I mean, everybody works hard. I mean, you know, and the reason that that I'm saying that speakers would have to come during the day is because we would not be open in the evening because we're going to have to reduce our hours.
Wouldn't the library have that option as well?
To
To to readjust their their hours? I don't
That's what I'm saying is that we would have to readjust the hours.
So then, you know, they they could readjust them where, you know, they cut off a morning, hour in the morning and add in the evening. So I mean,
Sure.
Uh, you know.
As far as, as far as other departments, I mean, as I said, you know, so the request right now is four hundred and eight thousand dollars or or four hundred and sorry, now I'm I'm getting my numbers mixed up. Four twenty, thank you, thank you. So four twenty, right? So we are and we are, we are contributing, we, Kichigami is contributing forty two thousand. So that's ten percent. We are contributing ten percent of the of the total ask, you know, so it's not, the the Kitchy isn't doing nothing. Kitchy is 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 buying down the the request by forty two thousand five hundred dollars.
Of money that we overpaid previous years.
Mm hmm.
That's not really
Well, we we and and Bemidji and the city of Bemidji and the city of Black Duck. It's not just, it's not just Beltrami County. You know, there's three participating LGUs in our branch libraries. It's not our money, you know, it's it's all of our money, not just Beltramis.
Are there any other questions? Comments?
I feel like the library system is is holding a gun to our head because they're not willing to utilize the the reserve funds like they should.
We're not using them as you want to. There's
All right, I'll call for the vote, and that is to, the the motion is to approve the proposed twenty twenty three budget, correct?
This is the the, this is with the full funding request from the Kichigami Regional Library System. Again, it's a total of a a levy totaling twenty eight point nine four seven million dollars. It's an increase of one point eight six million or six point eight seven percent. And since this is a budget, I would request a roll call vote.
All right. Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gosbick?
Because I don't want to see Black Duck to have to fund their levy and have Black Duck charge more, I'm going to vote yes for that.
Commissioner Lookachik?
No.
And myself, no. Motion carries three, two. All right, on to item nine, ratification of union contract for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty five.
Good evening, everybody. And it'll actually be the union contract ratification for twenty twenty three through twenty twenty five, to make that correction on there. And tonight I'm here to bring forth the union contract between the Assme Health and Human Services Group, who had an agreement with us prior to the August deadline that we had set for getting the same settlement that the other unions have been given so far. So that includes the seven, one, twenty twenty two, three percent market adjustment, a four percent twenty twenty three increase, a three percent twenty twenty four increase, and a two percent twenty twenty five increase. It also includes adjusting steps nine and ten to be three percent and taking away that fifteen and twenty year requirement. It includes increasing the health insurance flex dollar contribution by a hundred dollars in twenty twenty three, fifty dollars in twenty twenty four, and fifty dollars in twenty twenty five, and includes adding Juneteenth as a holiday when the state approves that. The only additional thing that this contract is asking for is that we will be working on an M O U with the union to just meet with them to discuss flexible work schedules and what that might look like within the county.
Any questions, Rowenda?
Pardon me?
Is there any questions, Rowenda? Rowenda, I guess, did the county approve Juneteenth as a holiday or how did, how does that work out?
At this point, the legislature has not added it to the holiday schedule for the state. It's a federal holiday, but it's not a state holiday. So if the state legislature approves it, then all of our contracts have it in it to add it at that time. So we're really waiting for the state legislators to get their work.
Any indication?
Pardon me?
Is there any indication?
It was in a bill last year, but did not
The legislature has to legislate first, right?
Thank you.
All right, if if there are no questions, I will ask for a motion.
I saw a move.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Anderson as our second.
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Olson to ratify the union contracts for twenty twenty two, twenty three through twenty twenty five. So this is the last of the labor. Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, legislative lobbying issues. Commissioner Lookachik? Anderson?
No, I'm fine.
Olson?
Are we doing everything?
We can, we can wrap it in one.
I am, I am very sad that I wasn't able to go to the Fall Policy Conference for the AMC. It's my favorite conference of the year and is my, is my last opportunity and I missed it. So that's all I got.
Commissioner Gosbick?
We had a solid waste committee meeting this morning, updated the the rest of the committee members on plummeting prices on our recyclables. And that's some of the other things that are affecting our our solid waste. We had a Polk County Solid Waste Committee meeting a week or so ago, and that's running into all kinds of challenges with the D N R and the Army Corps of Engineers on being able to expand to the next cells for our our over at Polk County in Foston, where we bring our garbage, our our garbage ends up out there. And it's just a constant struggle to, the legislators don't seem to understand, you know, that they appoint these people that that make these untenable rules on what you can do just because of some sterile sedge plant that's in a spot that's not supposed to even exist there. They they want to cordon off a whole section of what we had plotted out for expansion of our landfill. It's just ridiculous. And so it's just amazing. Some of the stuff we go through, an H R D C meeting, we've got to do something with the roof of the building and lots of lots of other good stuff, but I'll I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I was able to attend the AMC Fall Policy. It was really an interesting time. They gave me an opportunity to talk with other commissioners in regards to the county jail. It does sound like our colleagues and surrounding counties here do want to buy beds, you know, if that should be the case. So you did really miss out on a good, good conference.
There's always December. There's always the annual conference.
So we got a jail committee meeting tomorrow and special meeting for the jail project, so. I guess we're we're adjourned. Have a good night.